This conference will now be recorded.
And and also kind of a next steps memo, do you want me to send that now? Or do you just want us to brief you on it and send it after?
If it's easy enough to send it now, it might be useful, I guess, but.
Okay, happy to do that.
Shall we kick this thing off? We're recording now, so. Laura is here. Okay. Like to call to order the November 10th, 2021 meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission. Let the record show that all commissioners are present with the exception of Alex Murray. Let's take a look at the agenda and then we have two sets of minutes we need to approve. One from September 8th and one from October 9th, which was our walking tour. So let's take a look at the agenda. Pretty straightforward.
This is Commissioner Mount, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, my bad. Go ahead, Aaron.
This is Aaron, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi. Okay. Let's start with the minutes from September 8th.
This is Corey, I'll move to approve the minutes from September 8th, 2021.
This is Aaron, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes from our walking tour, October 9th.
This is Aaron, I'll move to approve the minutes from the October 9th Planning Commission meeting.
This is Corey, I will second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
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 Okay, I'm not seeing any members of the public present, so we can bypass that section. I'm guessing we don't have a mayor's report or any sort of report. Has anyone heard of that, Rana or Dan? No, okay. All right. Moving on, no public hearing, so we'll jump right into Dan Penrose's presentation on the Housing Action Plan Grant.
And yeah, thank you, Chair Rutherford. And Ron, I think the screen that you're sharing is actually the go to meeting hub. So just be aware of that. I just was able to send the materials that we're going to be briefing tonight. So we'll, you can look for those. One of them is a map, it's about six megabytes, it might take a moment to come through. So two items here real quick and then we'll jump into item five. And Laura Barker from SCJ's Lacy Office is going to assist with that briefing as I have to drop off a bit early this evening, so I apologize for that. Housing Action Plan Grant at our walk through in the month of October. I kind of mentioned that we had submitted the grant. I heard two weeks ago that that grant was approved. So that we have been awarded a Washington State Department of Commerce Housing Action Plan Grant with about, I think there's about maybe 19, 15 to 19 other communities in the state that were given this Housing Action Plan Grant Award. It's a second round of Housing Action Plans, plans of a number of other cities in our region applied for at the first round. We're working through the contracting issues on that right now, but I expect that, I mean, the grant awards for just about, just about $75,000. That's about a little bit over a year's worth of work. And a number of the things we're going to cover tonight will be covered in that Housing Action Plan. So keep that in mind if we kind of hedge or kind of talk about future action items and next steps, I think that's where it's going to be covered is in the Housing Action Plan. But we're well underway and we, you know, we get credit for, for the work that you did in the walking tour and the things that we're going to chat about toward the second part of the meeting today. So that is the Housing Action Plan Grant update. Any questions on that?
No, that's great, that's great news. Excellent. Okay. If there are no comments from Corey or Aaron, questions, we'll move on to, oh.
I was just gonna say, I haven't had a chance to open all the attachments and what you just sent. Is there information about that in one of those attachments or are the attachments to do with other things?
All of the attachments are related to item five.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll share with you the scope of work once it's approved by Commerce. So we can, if we're going to meet in December, I think that's, it should definitely be done by that. I sent the scope of work to Commerce's planning, the senior planner managing that grant on Monday. I think, I think the city will hear in a couple of weeks.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to an update on that in December then. So Dan, you want to tell us about the Habitat Conservation Plan Grant now?
Yes, and also the update on that is we submitted our final scope of work to Department of Fish and Wildlife. Their project manager, Mary Huff, is taking a look at that right now. That grant is for, I want to say a total of about $180,000. It covers about three years' worth of work.
Is that a state grant or is that a federal grant?
It's a federal, it's a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service federal grant.
Right.
And I expect that there will be, once we, the grant's been awarded and once we kind of get the scope all squared away, they'll maybe give a little bit more of an announcement on that front. That grant requires a match from the City of Tenino, so that's been maybe the more difficult item to kind of wrestle with because, you know, it's a big, it's a big amount of money for a Habitat Conservation Plan. And, and so there's a 25% match expectation on the City of Tenino. And so we, we can spread that over the duration of three years, but it still represents a pretty good hit. Fortunately, as you might expect, it's not, it doesn't need to be cash. It can be an in-kind contribution. So it'll be both planner time, clerk time, mayor time, and then associated stakeholder assistance, including folks in our own community as well as, as other nonprofits now. Can't just, can't, can't just, I mean, if you're volunteers like the Planning Commission is, you know, there's no in-kind time there because you're not reimbursed for your, you know, for your efforts, you know, other than donuts or coffee every once in a while. So it'll be, it'll be more like nonprofits in our region like the Thurston Conservation District and other, other players like that. So that's a long way around of saying that's been maybe the more challenging item to balance out is making sure this doesn't have a disproportionate effect on the city as we're trying to do the right thing with the prairie habitats, which is what the HCP will cover.
Will, who will be doing the writing? Was that something that'll go out to bid for some kind of biologic consultant, biology consultant or something like that?
Yeah, we, we plan to advertise for the technical work on that. The city will advertise. There's a, so yeah, that, that'll go out that way. I think the thinking is that many of the people who worked on the Thurston County HCP would, you know, would compete for that and have, you know, a good chance at it. I don't want to, I don't want to drag that solicitation and procurement process out too much. So
Yeah.
That's the thinking right now.
Yeah, they'd probably be best suited to do it most efficiently, I would think, the people who worked on Thurston Counties. Okay.
And I don't have a good handle for you on when that is going to go final. It may, it should be before the end of the year.
All right, well.
So any questions on that? Any other questions?
Not really. How, how long do you expect it to take from the time we hear the official word on the grant to when we actually have our own HCP in place that we can use? Do you have any idea about the timeline or not really?
I do, it's.
It felt like it took Thurston County like five years to do theirs or something.
It will, I think three years is a reasonable timeframe for our, for our community.
Okay.
I think, I think it'll probably take, there's some, there's some dates in the grant application that will have to slide because when we applied for the grant in February, we expected to get started in May and we're not started yet and it's November. So there's, there's going to need to be an adjustment, but there's only so much allowance or permission that U.S. Fish can, can grant during the grant cycle on the, you know, initially. So the fundings for a certain biennium, they're going to grant the money for the biennium. And if we need an extension, we'll have to go through that process. But I would, I would suggest that there's the Habitat Conservation Plan and then there's the NEPA EIS that will come for the environmental review on the tail end. And that will probably be its own year long process. So 18 months for the HDP, 18 months for EIS, three years all said and done. And that's just knowing what we know now and not expecting any, you know, hiccups to effort.
Right. Okay. Aaron, Corey, do you have any other comments or questions on the HCP? All right, well, I guess we may have time for you to finish number five after all, but we'll see, I guess. So Dan's going to do a recap of the walking tour and a summary of the next steps in that process.
Okay, and Laura, if you want to jump in on your camera, yeah, I think we might be okay here. So yeah. Ronnie, can, can I, do I have control of the sharing the screen there? I think maybe I can grab that in a minute. We're gonna, we're gonna start with, there's three, there's three attachments that I just sent. So one is a PDF of the map of the alleys in the community that we kind of checked out. Another is the kind of a discussion item white paper that we can, we're going to talk about. And then the third is an ADU funding article that was in the Voice, which is Thurston County Chamber newsletter or magazine that comes out and it was from, was, what was it from? It was like June of 2020, Laura, is that about right? Some like April?
You're muted, I think, Laura.
I get an audio on you, Laura, but. You're right.
Oh, it's green, but your mic is green, but we can't hear you.
All right, she'll work on that. So that's what that is, and we can talk about the ADU. But the way the briefing setup is, we'll chat through the alley vacation and then pivot over to some of the findings from the walking tour, which includes an ADU discussion. If that sounds fine to you.
Yes.
Laura, just chirp in whenever you want to test your mic. So let's start with, with the map. Are you seeing that?
Yes, can you make it bigger?
I can try.
I guess that's good.
Okay, so we've got three sets of colors here. I'll look at the legend here real quick. And if you want to pull up your own version to view and just kind of listen to me narrate it, I can do that too. But I think we should record, you know, get it on the shared screen so it's on the recording. Otherwise, people who are checking out later will be oriented. So green is maintain alley right of way. Yellow is potentially vacate based on future ownership and development. And pink or red is vacation is recommended. And I do recommend everybody take a vacation. Yeah. So you recall on our walk, we started at the intersection of Sheridan and Stage. Are we still showing the same map?
Yep.
Okay, I'll tweak on my side. We walked down Central Avenue all the way to Ritter, up north on Ritter to Lincoln and then down Lincoln and pretty much down Ragless slash Frost and back and around. So when we, when we walked, it was pretty clear that the alleys that were a block off SR 507 were heavily used and were used by the businesses in kind of the way the alleys are intended. Some of the alleys were more unimproved than others, but and some of them weren't, didn't punch all the way through. There were things maybe blocking that access on portions of them. But generally speaking, they were, they were being used in the way you would expect alleys to be used. So our recommendation on both the block to the south of Sussex and the block to the north, that those alleyways would be, you know, retained. So maybe, maybe we could start there as and as we look. So, so if you can see the, on the white paper, our suggestion is to keep those alleyways that are serving the homes in the block. And there is a potential safety issue on one of them. Should, should the alleyway want to be vacated, it may cause a a sight distance concern. So maybe we, maybe we start with that one and have discussion about the green. See if there's any insight from the planning commissioner or things that you would like us to consider.
Which alley do you want to start with? I'm sorry.
The, all of the green ones, our recommendation is for the green, the ones that are in the legend in the green, we would recommend not changing.
I, I personally agree. All the ones they have highlighted in green are used frequently as far as I can tell, especially on the north side of Sussex, I think. But, you know, also a lot of them on the south side, so. Yeah. So there is an alley. There is an alley north in between Sheridan and Custer, between Central and Sussex, even though it's not marked on here, I don't know if that matters. Do you see what I'm talking about? Like north of the school playground? North, north of the Parkside Elementary Playground. Yeah, up a little bit more, no, north, 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 a little bit more, yes. That's an alley. That's behind.
Yeah, I think it might be operating as an alley, but it looks like the parcel numbers are snapped to it. Laura, you, you saw that one, right?
Ah, that's the only way all those houses access their sort of like back parking lots. So I guess, I don't know, maybe it's not an alley. Interesting.
I think it previously was an alley and it may, may have been vacated. We looked at the quick title, you know, like a brief legal description on those and, and I didn't see anything in the language that talked about the, the alleyway vacation. But it certainly appears from the parcel maps that it's been vacated.
Interesting. That's heavily used as an alley, I know. I wonder who, huh, that's very strange. Well, whatever. Okay.
So they could have a private easement over top of each other's properties in order, in order to, for access, that, that wouldn't be uncommon. Any other feedback on the green or would you want to go talk about the yellow? And then we'll talk about the pink and then maybe double back and just get full on comments on.
Yeah, I don't see anything else with the green that I personally would question.
Are there, is there anything that should be green perhaps that's not?
There, I'm wondering about the alley over on the far west of the map, that's, it's running north, south off of Kitten Street, I don't know how to pronounce it.
Are you talking about these ones?
Yeah, that one, those ones there, I think if, if I'm not mistaken, I think those are fairly well used by the residents through there to access the rear of their properties.
So are they, are they yellow on your map or green?
They're yellow on my map, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think you're right. So if we, if we talk about the yellow ones real quick, our, our thinking is that there's potential for vacation there depending on future ownership and development pattern. But that wouldn't be something we would recommend that the city would initiate or and certainly not force vacation of those alleys. I think at first glance, they look like good candidates. That was our, that was our thought. But if you zoom in, there's quite a few garages that are, that are accessed off of there as well as a house just in general. I think one of these, maybe it's at the other end. One of these has a house that, you know, the, its whole garage is accessed off the alley. So the yellow really represents vacate options for vacation, but you'd have to be aware of what that does to the surrounding properties. And, you know, you could still have an access easement over the property to, to get to say some of the inner garages on those lots. The garage is accessed off the alleys on the inner lots. But I, I'm not sure what that would, you know, what that would accomplish. So they, they should be on a case by case basis. And I, maybe I'll, maybe I'll suggest that we come back to say this lot later in the ADU conversation. Because depending on, in short, depending on what you decide to do with this potential for infill, you remember this lot during our walk?
Yeah.
Depending on what you do with that may, may impact what you decide to do with the alley. Not, not us decide what, you know, depending on what, what the discussion is with the property owner and when they come in and they want to develop something. Do you, do you want to say, let's give, you know, vacate the alley and give it back to you so you can use it for development purposes? Or do you want to say, we encourage you to access your infill residential lots off of this existing alley? In short.
But he's talking about multifamily there, right? Obviously.
Right, that's the zone.
Yeah. Okay.
So same thing with this one down here off of Ragless and Frost, this kind of three quarters of a block or half of a block. It certainly doesn't need this alley there to make any of these developments work, depending on how you build them out.
Right. I, like I, like I said on the walk, I think all those lots, almost all of them, except possibly the house in the northwest corner owned by the same family, so.
Correct.
Probably they'll develop at the same time, I guess, most likely.
Correct, and you would, you know, but the, the issue being that if you wanted to sell this particular parcel for a particular singular use, you would be hard pressed to access that off of Sussex 507.
Yeah, that would be.
You would need, you would need to access this singular use off of that. And so to
I mean, so complicate your development. Yeah, so maybe first, like, just like your map suggests, there's no need to take action on vacating until we find out what the, the owner might want to do with it, basically. I mean, that's where we're at with those. So the recommendation is to basically not vacate, but be open to the possibility in the future, right?
Right, or approach those property owners and say, would you like, we're, we're doing a citywide vacation effort. Would you like us to include your properties in this? Because they appear to be decent candidates, depending on what you want to use it for in the future.
Right, well, maybe not ask them, but suggest that we would be willing to do it if they were about to develop it. Otherwise, they might encumber some future property owner, right? With no alley and now they have to retroactively figure it out. Who knows what could happen, I guess, but. It sounds, I mean, it sounds great if you're just offering it, you know, to somebody. I mean, I don't know, who knows? People usually take something that's free. Not always. Oh. Yeah.
Any, any other kind of comments on the, the yellow? The rationale with maybe the yellow on the block between Lincoln and Garfield is that some of these are being used and again, depending how the infill occurs, they, you might prefer alley access to garages rather than garages on the street. And if you vacate that, you complicate that future development pattern. You may get them onesie twosies depending on if you're right on, you know, one or two blocks off. I'm sorry, one or two parcels off of that, that side road. But you're probably not going to have somebody do an access improvement if they're, you know, block six and a, in a group of 12, they're probably just going to load it off the street. So we'll talk about that a little bit when we get to the housing side of this. Because I think that's where this design standard discussion goes.
How would it be treated if, let's say, for example, between Custer and Sheridan, south of Garfield, let's say those lots in the center of the six, the two middle lots weren't into vacating the alley, obviously, but the four on the edges were. Then how does that work out of curiosity? I mean, if we're offering the option to maybe vacate, the people in the middle don't get a, get a vote? Yeah. So the middle lot, yeah, exactly, exactly. Those two lots, north and south, let's say they want to keep the alley, but the four on the outside don't. Are they just out of luck or how would that work?
No, I'd have to look at the ordinance. But I believe he'd be best served if they all agree.
Sure.
I, I guess I wouldn't think the city has a, you know, compelling interest to do something that would cause controversy. We're trying, we're trying to help the development situation here and there have been some requests from citizens to evaluate this. And the mayor has asked the planning commission to look at it. So unless there's, you know, unless there's people who are on board with that, probably not a great thing to stir up.
Right, makes sense. Okay, well. Oh.
Sorry, I just, I was going to say I'm here.
Nice.
I called in on my phone because I couldn't, for some reason, get the computer audio to work at all. So hello, sorry.
Hello. Glad you made it.
Anything else on, on the yellow? Anything else on, on the yellow?
Nope, not really.
The, the, I think the easiest one for us to recommend is the, is the pink one. Um, then there's two of them on here. One is this right away vacation at the end of Ritter that butts up against the school. And, and kind of on the backside of the parking lot for the ball field.
Is that Howard when it gets past like the, the middle point there going north?
Uh, I think it's Howard from this point up.
And so with it, that's not going to be vacated where it is.
Well, I, I think I'd have to look at.
It's like two roads together or something.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to look at the underlying width, it, it may not need to be so big. And, and depending on how the legal language works, it might be easier just to vacate the. Twelve feet, I, I, I mean, it does definitely look, grab this again. It, it definitely looks like the buildings are already over top of the. And out into the right away, so we might be doing the district a favor by, by vacating that. When, when you, when you do this, you know, it seems straightforward or just to vacate it, but you have to make sure that any utilities that are in the street. Are considered and other things like that. So, so yeah, you're right, that, that part might be a little more complicated. I think this part is really straightforward.
Yeah.
And, and, and perhaps even. Pulling that out into here. Poten- potentially all the way.
All the way over to there probably, right? Cause it's all just used as sort of parking lot now, right? Sort of for the school, I mean that.
Building is over top of some of this depending on how you think the. You know, right, I think the, the right away works, sorry, a little excited here. I, I, I think I had a conversation with the superintendent a couple of years ago, they were asking about what they could do to clean up the property lines. This, you know, street vacation would certainly be one of them.
Yeah, and then the, yeah, the one on the, uh, east side, I think makes a ton of sense. I mean, we could never have anybody driving out of the alley onto, uh, old highway ninety nine right there. Especially with the gas station there at this point, that would be insane. Uh, just over complicating sort of a complicated intersection.
Right. Those, those really represent our recommendations, we're, um, we're happy to talk through. Through that, there also may be a, a few examples outside of the, this core. That we could look at, but in our, in our, so if you have examples where you'd want us to take a look, we could certainly do that. But in our quick little survey, we didn't see anything that was kind of jumped out, that would be obvious.
What about the south side of Sheridan where it goes through the Parkside Elementary School? Yeah. Does the school just not paying taxes on that bit?
I don't actually even know. What the school district pays in tax, property taxes.
I don't, I don't either, I was just joking about that, but it does seem like it's kind of like, what's the point of that?
They, they get a majority of the, of the property tax. Yeah, I don't, I, I think that's, that, that would work as well. Laura, do you see any hang up on that when, when you were looking in the maps?
Yeah, no, I, I think that makes sense.
What about, um, on the south side of the, uh, of the tennis courts for. The middle school, like they're just on the north side of the map in the center, uh, right under the P slash SP. It's that road that runs sort of along the, I don't know what that is actually. Is that, is that like a FEMA ditch or something? Kind of FEMA thing, not sure.
The ones that, that I highlighted there?
Yeah, that's right.
It looked like an actual parcel when, when they have kind of the lines at the end that kind of.
Oh, I see, yeah, it looks like it includes that weird parking lot on the east, or east side there, I guess.
Yeah, that one keeps going out over into here. This one for sure is, is a closed system.
Alright.
But we could check that. It may, it may be like that and, and, uh, you know, it may be owned by the city. I don't know. That's good.
Uh, what about, um, what about that, um? Is that a, is that a parcel over on Ritter Street, um, the south side of Ritter Street? Um, just to the left or the west of the multifamily designation on the south side there? That long skinny one that just runs along all those weird, those smaller houses that are there, not weird, but.
Now, I know I've looked at that, I believe that city owned, that entire parcel potentially has utilities in it.
And they're still planning on widening that road, right? I'm probably gonna take that up, I guess. Sounds.
We'll double check that on Ritter Street, but I, I believe it's city owned and it's for utilities. So. General agreement on the green. General agreement on the yellow and agreement on the, on the red. All across the board and then the comment to add the piece that's. Um, south of Sheridan, I'm sorry, the end of Sheridan, this, this portion right here will, will definitely.
Yeah, maybe look at the north side of Howard there, is it Ritter or is it Howard or what's the deal with them?
Oh, up here.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that like, that seems good to me. What do you guys think? Commissioners?
This is Erin, I agree, especially the pink close to the, um, grocery store, that little section.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement on the green and the pink, um, maybe still a little confused on how we're treating the yellow. Um, can you maybe talk about how those are, what the actual treatment looks like if we're saying we agree on, on yellows being potential? Like what does, what does it mean to be potential? When would that? I, I kind of understand, like, the one that is, has got a lot of the parcels under the same owner. If that same owner decides to develop a bunch, it might depend on what that development looks like and what they want to do. But we've also got some where there's, you know, multiple. Owners of parcels all, all together, and how would it look like for those? Would we just be reaching out to those homeowners if we leave them yellow and saying, is this something that you might want to do and let them take it from there?
That, that definitely sounds like a strategy to me. I think there's probably one or two other strategies, that one sounds fine. You could send a, you could send a nice little letter saying in an, in an inventory of alleys, uh, throughout the city, you know. Your alley was identified as having, you know, potential vacation, um. You know, and tell them what that would mean and, and see if there was kind of general consensus on that. It, it depends on what development you see, you see come in, I think that, that would, that's kind of what we're suggesting is. Be open to the, the parcels that are, that have alleys that are yellow. Be open to potentially vacating them if that serves that property owner, I think those are good candidates.
So really, this, the strategy about coordinating that potential with the, uh. With the landowner would, is still to be determined, really.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, the, the, the one, I think this one is easier for me to talk about it that way. The, the triple or the four, you know, the four lots that are off of Lincoln and, um, and Hodgins. They're Hodgson, these ones, uh, that are off of Keith Ann are, are. It might make sense to vacate them, it might, it might not, I mean, the stuff that's along the western edge of these parcels right here. There's a Arbor Vita, there's like a chain link fence with Arbor Vita up against it. I don't think that taking out the alley in there is going to make a difference either way. Um, but it, but on the south end it does, like the south end, this is the house that I was talking about, they, they accessed their entire property. Off of the alleyway, so if you vacated it, now they're gonna have to go and get an easement and. You know, that's gonna potentially cause an issue with each of their neighbors, because they have to have easements on each other's property. And when, you know, the property sell, that has to be disclosed, so like what, why hap- why, what's the hassle of that, right? And the city, you know, the city isn't, um, isn't doing a ton to maintain these. So it's, it's really a, a thing is, would, would street vacation, I'm sorry, alley vacation facilitate development in a way that? You know, it add, add square footage to a lot to be able to let them go up to that next threshold of, of density. So more of the yellow ones are just, we, we think these are good candidates for discussion on a future vacation, should the property owners. Want to do that, either approaching the city or, or with the city taking a proactive approach to them.
And who, uh, who would decide about, uh, what approach to take when we get to that point? Is that up to us?
I think you could make a rea- i- if, if you needed to, I think you can make a recommendation to, to the council. Ultimately, the council's the one who's going to be making the vacation through a resolution.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, do you want to talk about the ADU funding?
Yeah, well, let's, let's pivot to number two there on the, on the white paper. Um, findings from the walking tour, I'm not, I'm gonna let Laura start on this, because I'm gonna bump up against my time here. Um, but the ADU funding thing is more for, for an FYI that there are, you know, mortgage options out there. And, um, Laura can talk a bit more if we need to about the cost of, of those things. But I'm gonna, I'm going to pull that one over and see if the screen shares on that one. My computer settled down, is, so is that white paper coming up?
Uh, can you make it a little bigger? Yeah, we can see it. Okay, there we go.
Starting at the, kind of the bottom of that first page, the finding from the, findings from the walking tour. Um, so we are reflecting what we thought we heard and we, so this is a dialogue and we want you to push back. If you, if you are saying we heard something and we didn't, or if we need to add things to this. Um, you know, the, the end goal being that you can give us direction on what to do about what you saw. So is that enough of a hand, handoff, uh, Laura?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, that sounds good, um. So yeah, first, just a, um. Kind of a summary of, uh, what we gathered from you guys, um, during the walking tour. Um, I think one of the biggest takeaways was that, um. It did seem like you thought that having design standards for infill development would be a good idea. Um. And then along those lines, um, just that. Uh, it, as part of a design standard, um, it would be good to include some sort of a scale down. Or transition area between multifamily and single family zones, um, such that it's not necessarily a hard transition. But, um, you know, that development, uh, scale kind of, um.
Missing middle, yeah.
Yeah, right, um. And then also that, um. I think it was, uh, discussed that it would be good to include examples of ideal housing styles, including, um. Maybe some of the existing housing in Tenino that, um. That you guys think would be appropriate, um, for infill development. Um, so including like, you know, photographs, examples of those, um, housing styles. Um. And then also, I think we talked a lot about the, um, the, the missing middle housing types. Um. Which, um, we looked at. I guess the, the packet of housing types, um, and I do have that open if anybody needs me to share. But, um, I think what we heard is that there's. Oh. I can share, let's see.
Yeah.
Did that work?
Yep.
Okay, um. Where's my mouth? Okay. So yeah, um. We had, you know, all, all these different types, um, and I think. That you guys identified as preferred housing types for, um, Tenino. Um, the duplex, both the side by side and stacked versions, um, the cottage court and courtyard buildings. Um, the stacked triplex, a town home, and then also live work, um. Unit potentially in the commercial zones, um, and then maybe the other, uh. Some of that, like the, maybe the fourplex and some of the other larger multiplex might not be as good of a fit. Um. In these residential areas, um. Does all that sound right so far, as far as, um, takeaways from the walking tour? Um, and is there anything that I might have missed there?
I mean, I think you covered it.
Um. Okay, I'm trying to, I don't know where my, um. My screen with everybody's faces on it went away, I don't know where that went, oh well. Um.
I'm frowning now.
I was gonna say, it's not a big loss, but.
And I'm like, why? It's, it's nice to see, you know, just how people are, if people are reacting terribly, um. Anyway, um, another thing that we talked about is, um, allowing ADUs or accessory dwelling units in, um. Kind of the, at least the central, um, portion of Tenino, um. And so we did a little bit of a code check, um. Wonder. Oh, there we go, okay. Um. See if I can zoom in here. Um. So ADUs, uh, based on the, um, existing municipal code aren't allowed outright in any zone. And in all cases, an administrative use permit would be required, um. So. Um, it's just, it's kind of just a little extra administrative stuff. Um, but then with an administrative use permit, ADUs would be allowed in, um. Single family and multifamily residential zones and then, um. In the WT special purpose zone, which I've actually forgotten what that stands for, um. But.
The western I know?
Oh, there you go, yeah, that's the extra, um, the, the annexed portion over there, that's right. Um. So, yeah, um. So yeah, um. That's uh what the code says about ADUs, um. And then I have a, I guess, just a couple of um recommendations or potential future action items, um. Just based on the um, the walking tour and the feedback we got from you guys there, um. The first is um maybe clearly identify boundaries of the area that we wanna um, that we wanna talk about as far as infill um design standards. Uh I'm guessing it's kind of like the, the little downtown core, like a few blocks removed from um from Sussex, but um you know, that, I think that's the first step is just to identify um the boundaries that you would want the infill standards to apply to and then um just go through and do an inventory of, um, I mean, we sort of have an inventory of the, the vacant parcels already, but maybe also identify some of the underutilized parcels um within that downtown area, um. And then um the next action item is just to create those design standards for infill development. Um there's a lot of other similarly sized cities um in the area that, that would have examples of that sort of design standards that we can look at, um. And then uh within those design standards include a library of appropriate examples um for each type of housing. That would also involve figuring out the ideal locations, maybe for each housing type, like what zones um they should be allowed in. Um and then also, that would potentially include a discussion for whether you would prefer street loaded versus alley loaded. Um and again, that would be probably dependent on, on the type of housing. Um. And then, you know, attached versus detached garages, do you want to um include that as part of the design standards, does it matter, um?
For the ADU specifically, the garages?
Um no, definitely for each of the, each of the housing types, I think um a lot of a lot of these examples that we showed um are, are showing like a um an alley loaded garage in the back or a detached garage that is accessed via um oh, like a little side driveway, um but obviously that isn't um the ideal setup in all cases, so. Um. You know, if there is preference on that, then um I guess we would wanna identify that. Um. And then I, I'm, I'm just gonna quickly go through each of the next couple of um potential action items and then we can discuss, um. So the next action item here, um letter C would be um our recommendation would be to allow ADUs outright in the um in the multifamily and the commercial zones in an effort to promote appropriately scaled infill development and provide affordable housing within the city's core, um. Because uh, I mean, I think we um on the walking tour kind of had a discussion about how ADUs are kind of they feel like an easy first step in terms of um infill housing and um adding appropriately scaled additional housing within the city. Um and so just allowing them outright versus requiring an administrative use permit um in those particular zones would just uh make that a little bit easier of a step for homeowners to take um in terms of adding an ADU in their, on their property, um. And then also, uh letter D here is to allow ADUs outright in certain single family zones. And you would probably wanna maybe identify those single family zones within, you know, a certain distance of uh Sussex or whatever, um wherever you think it makes sense to um to allow ADs, I mean, it, it could be um throughout the whole city if, if that is what makes sense. Um and then a longer term item would be to potentially create a small number of pre-approved ADU plans to expedite um that process in the future and with um looking at other cities for examples. And, and I think that Lacey is one that has done just that, and that's the um that ADU funding strategy sheet, um let's see. That Dan had pulled up. Um and so this is just uh an example of how um Oley Fed uh partnered with, I think it was Lacey, I can't remember if it was Lacey or um yeah, okay, so the city of Lacey um came up with um just the, they worked with, I believe it was the Artisan Group to come up with a number of um pre, a number of um ADU plans that the city has pre-approved, um and then they're working with Oley Fed to um if help with funding for homeowners for those ADUs to make it, um just to expedite that process a little bit and make it a little um a little bit easier for people to um add an ADU. I think um that would be one strategy, uh one longer term strategy moving forward um to potentially look at. Um. And that, so that's it for the potential action items, um. And I guess now is uh inappropriate time to discuss, or if there's any questions or, or thoughts or anything missing, um. Anything that we talked about during the walking tour that did not make it in here?
I guess um one question I have, um would, why would it be a good idea to allow ADUs in the C one, two, and three zones outright? Um it doesn't really fit with the intended desired use in those zones, right? I mean, C three um is supposed to be a mix of commercial and residential kinda, but the other zones, I don't think that were encouraging new residential in those areas. But, you know, I get that we wanna do infill, I just wonder, do we wanna encourage that in the commercial zone?
Yeah, so um that's a fair point and maybe it would be um a better idea to say, let's allow it outright in just the multi and single family zones and um still require a administrative use permit within the commercial zones, and that way it can be a more, um more of a case by case basis. Um.
I guess I would, I would prefer that so that it, I mean
Yeah.
Yeah. So we don't get something that's, you know, borderline, not really um ideal with a new ADU behind it, that we're never gonna be able to change the use of that property now, because it has like a brand new, you know, two hundred thousand dollar ADU behind it.
Yeah, no, that totally makes sense, um.
Uh, I don't know. Yeah, case by case makes sense to me, but.
I think that's a good point, um and I think maybe outright in the um, the multi and single family zones makes sense, but you're right, um as far as the commercial zones go, it's probably better to be able to um to look at those each one by one and, you know, make sure it actually makes sense before um permitting it, so. That's um definitely a good call, we can make that change for sure, um. Yeah.
Uh we've talked a little bit about um uh Lacey's plan, pre-approved plans um before, I think Alex, Commissioner Murray brought it up um once before. I think that's a pretty interesting concept, I think the ones in Lacey are pretty expensive, like the I mean, I don't know, the pre-approved plan sets, but how would we go about, would we have to partner with a builder similar to the way that Lacey partnered with Artisans Group, I guess, to, to generate those plans, I suppose, right?
Yeah, I, I, that's typically how it works, is you would partner with an um an architect to come up with those plans and that way you know, um I mean, the city is able to, to look at them upfront and make sure that they jive with your um design standards and that, you know, you're okay kind of um pre approving those or um it's like you're, you know, you're putting your stamp of approval on it upfront, so yeah, you would, you would partner with a, an architect in, in general um to do that, and I think you're right that the um, the city of Lacey um their pre-approved ADUs are pretty expensive and I, I I feel like for sure you would want to go with um maybe something that, that would be a little less expensive, I think, um.
Or just have a broader scale, I guess, uh
Yeah. Right, and I mean, I know I I don't think that there's a lot of people that would probably want to, you know, spend two hundred thousand dollars on a, a backyard ADU, so, I mean, I think it makes sense to scale them appropriately to what you think people are gonna um desire to have.
Um are ADUs typically uh connected to the same sewer connection, is that part of what it is to be an ADU, or do you think, or would they have their own sewer connections? Just out of curiosity, if you don't know, no big deal.
Yeah, I don't know, that is a good question, actually, um. I know that they, um I mean, obviously, they, they have to have a sewer connection, um I just don't know if it's on the same one as the main, uh the main unit or not, so.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I know, I'll look into that, I think in general, um like, I don't know if it, if this is always the case, I think in general, ADs um tend to be on their own uh like separate utility meters. Um but I don't know if that's always the case, like if that's a rule or um I will look into that, that's a very good question. Um.
So um under the ADU code check, that's the uh current uh regulations in Tenino, right?
Um. Yep.
So any lot could have up to a thousand square foot ADU? Uh I didn't realize that, that's pretty, that's pretty big, actually, uh. That's bigger than some of the main residents on some of the lots.
Right, um and that is, yeah, any lot within these zones. Um. Um and again, only with, with um administrative use approval. But yeah, it's pretty considerable, it's a pretty sizable um building that would be allowed, yeah. And I think, again, I mean, you would have to um uh obviously abide by the um like lot coverage standards and everything, um.
Oh, yeah, of course.
You would, you wouldn't be able to necessarily have a thousand square foot, um but if it major um lot coverage, you know, go over the, the threshold, but
Right.
Um as far as um creating design standards um for infill development, was that, I mean, that seemed to be a pretty ye- like uh universal want among the commissioners, I don't know if that seems like that's true. Sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, Corey.
Oh, I, I was just uh trying to clarify, are you speaking about like the preferred housing types or?
Yeah. I've done also, I mean, I think one of the things we were talking about as we were walking around was um that, um I think somebody mentioned that it would be you know, you don't wanna have the same like um shoebox apartments that are like maybe downtown Olympia, like just copy and paste them and drop them in and um like you wanna have design standards to make sure that um the infill development kind of sticks to the character um of the existing uh, the existing houses and existing buildings.
Yeah, one, one thing, I know uh Alex was pretty animated about uh roof lines and that kind of thing. Yeah, kind of pointing out, you know, just angles and, and uh his preference to see that kind of thing continued.
Yeah.
Those, those are the kind of design standards we'd be talking about developing as we go through and
Yeah, that, that and as well as, you know, I mean, you can get as specific as you want, but um you know, like siding materials, um how, you know, how uh like one thing is um um a lot of, a lot of cities don't necessarily wanna have um like the whole, like if you have a row of townhomes, they don't necessarily want the whole entire like front to be garages all the way across, so it's, some places have design standards where, you know, you can only have X percent of your um street frontage can be garage, um. I don't know, things like that, um.
Then what, there's also the uh, the point about a transition from the multifamily to a single family. Would um would we need to create a new like multifamily light zone to be able to dictate design standards within, you know, kind of the border of single family or
like single story uh multi-unit buildings like that, you mean, like triplexes but single story, that kind of thing, or?
Yes, you mean?
Yeah. Well, I was just gonna say, um that would be one way to do it, um to create a, a whole separate transitional zone, um. And another, I, I guess another way you could do it is um that your design standards could specify, um I don't know, within uh X distance of the edge of the um multifamily zones. Probably the, the easiest way to do it is to have a transitional zone. in between, but.
Could you set like, uh, no, sorry. Could you set like a larger setback from adjoining lot when you're going from multifamily to single family like that? I mean, would that be good or?
Yeah, um, that's actually one thing. Another thing, um, could just be like stepping down the allowed building height. And obviously it's not going to be a huge, um, step down because I think that the, the highest or the tallest, um, allowed would be like 35 feet, right, in the multifamily zone? Um, I mean, so you can say like, maybe in the transition zone, like it's 25 feet or something like that. Um, or that, that the density, the density is another thing, like maybe you're allowing highest density stuff in the multifamily zone, um, and then like before it just goes straight to single family, maybe then you have your um, townhomes or your duplexes, um, in a transitional zone. So, I mean, there's, there's any number of ways you could do that, but, um, I just know that that was mentioned when we were, um, walking through um, about like trying not to have just a super stark transition from these like, you know, three-story apartment buildings that go like all the way to the edge of the, um, the property line and down to like a single story, um, single family dwelling. So yeah, the, the design standards are definitely a good way to achieve that, um, transition. I think the biggest takeaway that I got was that, um, that everybody kind of felt like the infill development really needed to be appropriately scaled, um, in, in context with the, um, the existing surrounding buildings. And I think um, having design standards specific to infill development is probably the most effective way to achieve that. Like you still have your, um, you know, your building code, your zoning code that, um, would apply to all new development, but then within this, um, downtown core area or whatever the boundary is, you would have, um, you know, additional standards on top of that that are just specific to infill development. And I think Alex was the one also who mentioned that he had gone around and like taken photos of other of houses throughout tonight that he thought were good examples. And, um, I think that's where the idea for having like a library of existing examples that are kind of like ideal, um, ideal examples for, you know, new infill housing. And I think that's where that idea came from. Anyway, so any other thoughts on any of these future action items? Or anything that you want to discuss in a little more depth?
So I'm just trying to think of the process a little bit. We would want to identify an area, an overlay within which the infill design standards would apply, which, which probably would span several zones, two or more, uh, zones. So then we would want to, so then we would want to dial it down and set, set those design standards within each zone, including transitional zones. That's kind of the, that's kind of the process we would be looking at?
Yeah. Yep. And, right, and, and if you also wanted to, um, add a zoning district that was like a transitional multifamily transitional or, you know, something like that, that would also be, um, a part of that process. If, yeah, that would be like a recommendation to council if you thought that that was something that you wanted to do.
I think coming up with a whole new zone seems like a lot of more effort than it needs to be for some reason. But.
I, I mean, I think it's possible to, um, figure out a, a a way to scale down towards the edges of the multifamily zone without coming up with a whole new zone.
That, that would probably be easier because we have to do a, a comp plan amendment, right, to change the zoning or to add a zone? I would guess. But won't that, that would probably, I mean, the zones are set the way they are right now, but I mean, we might want to change them again in the future. I don't know. It would be like, um, sort of an intermittent step that would maybe be unnecessary. I don't know. Like we don't really know. It's hard to know what things will be like in, you know, 25 years.
Yeah. No. Yeah, that's always the challenge too with planning is that you're thinking about things 25 years down the road or you're trying to. And it's, um,
We don't want people to curse our name in 25 years. Multifamily light? Whose idea was that? Just kidding Cory.
I thought it was your idea.
I think that, that is a very good point and I think, um, just having design standards as an overlay to the existing zoning in that sense makes a lot more sense and, um, I think that we could come up with ways to to scale down, um, towards that, like be- between zones and. Yeah. So I think that's a point well taken.
Laura, um, I'm wondering if you have, uh, any input on the pros and cons of street versus alley-loaded arrangements?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, maybe I don't know how to assess those.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of that also comes down to what type of house it is, what type of housing it is, but, um, a lot, I mean, obviously, um, most of your single family dwellings are street loaded, um, which makes sense. Uh, I think alley-loaded really makes sense in, um, the denser areas, the more, the denser, um, zones, like.
Like heavy traffic areas, kind of, maybe also?
Yep. That's not the right thing. Um, so let's see. Um, like for instance, where you have something like these townhomes that are, um, side by side like this, a lot of times it makes more sense to have those be alley-loaded, um, with the garage facing the alley, just because if, like, if you had a garage, like a two-car garage on the front of each of these, um, then the whole frontage would be garage and the whole frontage would be like driveways, um, pulling into those garages and that makes it a lot less of a pedestrian-friendly, um, zone, which is one thing that you want to keep in mind, um, especially closer to downtown where you know, everybody is going to be walking to the store or, um, or to school or whatever. Um, so having alley-loaded, uh, garages in that case, um, you know, probably makes more sense just so you you aren't going to navigate like a field of driveways to get down the, um, the sidewalk. But, so it really, it really just comes down to, um, I guess both like what the type of housing is, like how um, and, and what your vision for, you know, a particular area is. Um, I don't think there's necessarily, like, all other things being equal, I don't think one is necessarily better than the other. Um, it, it's just uh, what, you know, what makes sense in that particular area. So maybe I, that would be another thing that would be covered in design standards, you know, just, um, like if the density is greater than, you know, 20 units per acre or whatever, um, and the preferences for it to be alley-loaded or something like that.
For sure.
Anyway, I don't know. Does that, does that, was that an answer to your question?
Uh, yeah, thank you. No, actually that, that definitely is, uh, some, something to consider just as we go forward and start talking about these design standards.
Yeah.
I don't have a planning background, so trying to, trying to just get a hold of what different decisions can mean for, for the, um, the community and the decisions we're, we're making them.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. And I mean, there's other, there's a lot of examples from other, um, uh, similarly sized cities nearby that, um, we can pull together as far as design standards, so to kind of share, um.
That might be a good idea.
Examples of what that might look like.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I'll put that on my to-do list. Um, anything else? I don't know. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor any of these points, um, but I'm happy to talk about anything if, you know, if there's other questions.
Uh, no, I don't have any more questions. Erin, do you have any more questions? Sorry.
No, thank you. Um, I also don't have a planning background, so I'm just taking it all in and I appreciate the questions that were asked and agree that I think seeing an example of a similar-sized city, um, what their design standards look like would be really helpful.
Okay. Cool. Sounds good.
All right, well, um, yes, if that did, uh, do you have any other information you want to present, Laura?
Uh, I, that, that was it for now, um, yeah. So if you, um, Dan said he sent out these, the PDF, so, um, if you want to look back, I will, um, I'll make the minor suggestions, um, or edits that you, uh, talked about. Um,
Okay.
Like for instance, um, not necessarily allowing ADUs outright in the commercial zone. Um, so I'll make those minor edits, but then, you know, if you want to look through and if there's anything else that you have questions about, um, feel free to just shoot an email.
Uh, yeah, that sounds good to me. Let, let's, why don't you send us an email with the, you know, our suggestions so we can, you know, keep track of the progress of the discussion?
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure how to stop sharing my screen, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. You, you can proceed.
Oh, well, that's the end of the meeting, I guess, um, after this, so Cory, Erin, um, Rana even, or Laura, do you have any announcements you'd like to make? Any interesting stuff about town?
None for me.
Okay. Uh, well, and that, oh Cory, wait.
I was just gonna say that there was a helicopter on the high school field today. I, I thought that was pretty fun.
Oh. What was it doing?
Well, I think, uh, probably it was an army helicopter. So I don't know exactly, but, uh, all the high school students were out there looking at it and
Oh.
Maybe for Veterans Day. I'm not sure.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the Marine Corps birthday today. That's important.
Oh. Nice. How old?
Uh, 246.
Oh, not bad.
Not bad. Still kicking.
Okay, uh, all right, well, on that note, uh, thank you for presenting, Laura. We really appreciate your help with this stuff. None of us are trained planners, but we're trying to do our best. Uh, and so, yeah, on that note, I will say meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, bye. Good night.